You gotta order them, then they deliver.
Oh.
It's like a million dollars thing. From like the cities or something. I don't think they have them anywhere in the state, do they?
Sioux Falls.
Sioux Falls? I don't think. They do? They have Krispy Kreme? I don't think they have it. No. Is it? Is it a Krispy Kreme store? Or is it like in a grocery store?
He used to have before they were making them there. I don't know if they still do. Randy, sure is nice having that bridge open on twentieth.
Take a look at them.
And it looks fabulous. I mean, it's a very nice, you know, the width and everything like that. Wow. It's almost like we're driving off a state highway, but it's a road.
I'm waiting for my phone call. This guy called me. The legislature called me David before yesterday complaining that I'm bringing over the down here. But I said, well, we're working on it. I'm waiting for him to call back and tell, say, thank you.
He probably thinks it was because of him that he got it done.
It's just. Casino Road up north, Pierce County line. The center of that is really bad case. And we have to get over there later. So we did a poker run on Saturday and there was a lot of fights. I was worried about some of the.
Eighty-four.
I told him that so. Yeah, we went by an ironist. Get them up. Just a little. Just ninety. Maybe take.
I'd like to one of you guys.
Nine o'clock.
Going round. I didn't say, what about?
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. We'll call the meeting of the Cottington County Commission to order. Today is Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. All commissioners are present in person this morning and will rise with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll have our distinguished city manager lead us this morning.
Let's make it still quiet. I mean, I'd say to America. And to the Republic, which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Supervisor, please silence your cell phones so they do not disrupt the meeting this morning. Call for public comment may be submitted in person or by telephone by calling six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Commissioners, any conflict of interest items?
No.
Nope. Seeking none. We'll move on to number four, action to approve the August nineteenth agenda. By Gable, second by Schwer. The only thing that I would note on that is number sixteen. The groundbreaking at the new jail was held yesterday. So that can be removed. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is action to approve the August twelfth minutes.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Brings us to item number six, and that is discussion with our city manager, Mr. Alan Stager, who is here with us this morning. All turn on your mic before. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I I don't have an agenda this morning other than to come and make an introduction, and I I think that's good. I don't want to be before you the first time when we are negotiating something or dealing with some crisis somewhere within our shared jurisdiction. Great, but um, you know, I'm a longtime resident of the community. I've been here twenty-some years, and so I understand the city and the county and how we can work together. And just as an outsider looking in, I think our relationship has never been better as I I look at the contributions you guys are making in economic development, the way that our departments are working together. Um, you've got a memorandum of understanding coming up for the the aerial photography uh, later on in the agenda. I want to make sure that you guys know where where to contact me and make sure that the door is always open between the city and the county. And we are here to uh, to support you and to work with you in any way that we can. So thank you. Uh, thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. I'd be happy to uh, answer any questions that I can.
That's great.
What do you see as kind of the big stuff coming up for the city? You're speaking as the.
You know, the big stuff coming up for the city, we we've got to get a budget put together. Um, and then we've got the next round of council priority projects, uh, things that uh, the past council has reviewed and said they're important priorities for the city. And those include a street maintenance facility, fire service on the east side of the city and the county, really. Um, and then housing are the three big things that the council looks at as priorities in the next couple of years.
I just want to say.
Commissioners.
With the with the jail project, we appreciate the the city. We're working with the uh, uh, waiving some of the permit fees, and so that was something that Brandy was especially helpful with that. So.
Great.
And that that helps, you know, that's kind of just makes sense, you know, since we're, we both benefit from the jail. And so so we um, the typical permit fees would have been a significant, would have been a noticeable thing in the jail jail budget. So.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Good to follow up on that. Also, I was a stiffening. No, you weren't. Anyway, uh, uh, Randy was, but they appreciated the uh, cooperation with the city and the county. The the highway into two twelve, you know, and you know, you don't get compliments from DOT very often, but they were very complimentary and getting all of that work done ahead of time. And it made it made that transition a lot easier. So pretty neat that.
Good.
Yeah.
What? What question was? No. Did, when does the city approve their budget? It seems to me it changed during the past few years.
We are now approving our budget in November.
Okay, that's what.
And and so right now we're in the process of of preparing all the detail.
Because it was before it was September like.
It was.
We do. Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Big process.
Yeah.
Right. Anybody have anything else? I guess I would just like to add, you know, we do appreciate the partnership with the city and and I would concur. I don't think it's ever been stronger between the city and the county. Maybe it has. I don't know. I'm looking from the outside. That's what I see. And so we do appreciate our partnership. We do have a lot of projects that we work side by side on and and that's a good thing. So.
Good.
Thank you. Everything from economic development to pictometry and um, right on down the line. So we appreciate that.
Great. I appreciate it.
You have to.
City manager, Alan Stager. All right, let's move on to our monthly reports. Uh, Director of Equalization, Shawna. Shawna, are you doing the pictometry? As what? So.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm trying to.
Um, I missed you guys last week. We were at a town at um, a workshop in Canton. Um, which was actually pretty good. We got to go into the um, the county highway shop in Lincoln County. The thing is amazing, just letting you know, but um, it's huge, but we got to um, look at all the different aspects of, you know, the bigger things that go into the big steel buildings and stuff, and that's basically what the workshop was for. But that was just really needed to go in there. Um, but anyways, last week, the state's attorney did let you guys know that we did win our two O H E cases this year. Um, we just found that out last week. Um, and now um, the sad part about that is we have to enter that into our system, even though the values didn't change. And now we have to rerun all of our abstracts and all of our reports and send them into the Department of Revenue over again. And so then we will finally be finished with our twenty twenty-five assessment year. Um.
Can you do that? They still have a right to appeal that.
They still have a right to appeal that to Circuit Court, but there's really no spot in our system for Circuit Courts we have. We go through and even if like you guys don't change anything at county boards, we still have to enter what that value was for county boards, even if it didn't change. Now we have to do O H E. They don't have anything for Circuit Courts. We don't have to go back and change anything. Um, but when you go from O H E to Circuit Court, the Circuit Court judge is basically just looking at all the evidence and the testimony that took place at O H E. And so they're not, we're not entering any more evidence. So it's basically just checking on, making sure the judge did their due diligence there. Yep, pretty all cut and dried. Um, and so right now the office staff's working on that. Sales are definitely picking up. We have had more residential Watertown sales this year that at this time than we did last year. So I think the sales are coming back. People are realizing that the interest rates aren't really going to go down that much, so they're starting to buy, but it's more the hundred thousand to three hundred thousand range. Um, those neighborhoods are seeing the most of the sales right now. Um, and the appraisers are out at Lake Compeska this year. We're not quite halfway through. The weather has really um, been slowing things down out there. It has been brought up. We may or may not finish with the houses out there. There's still a good chance that we can, but if we do not, we won't put any of the houses on this year. We'll finish next year and then we'll put all of the lake on at one time, not just half the lake at one time, one year and the other half. So, but we're hoping that it can get a little dry out a little bit and we can start getting more done.
Shawna, how are we doing with our assessments? Like, what's what's the schedule now with the lake? So lake is, once the lake is done, where are we at?
Then we are um, neighborhood eighteen, which is out by the lake, but nothing on the lake. So everything else that's out there, and then we work our way into town. So then we start like the Derby Downs area. So we basically start at the lake and then come in and work our way all the way through.
Okay.
Just the different neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Sometimes we can fit more than one into a year. Just depends on how many houses are in there. But we do have a schedule. That's.
Okay.
But that's all I really have for that.
Try to go easy on them. That's my district and my phone. Last time you did that, my phone almost rang off the hook.
Well, your phone will probably bring off the hook again. However, um, since we have done this one like fifteen years ago, I'm hoping that it's not going to be the big huge increases, things like that. Um, I look at our ratios every month just to see where we're at, and I have never had a ratio out at the lake that's as good as it is right now. So basically meaning we are pretty close. We're at like eighty-five percent out there right now. And um, we were going into it hoping that it's just going to be a few houses here and there that, you know, the updates that we don't have, things like that that are going to change. So not, it's not going to be a major change for everybody. It'll be, that's what we're hoping for anyway, but I can't promise. But that's what it's still looking like now.
I'll I'll be ready regardless.
All right. Anything else, Shawna? Commissioners, anything else? All right. If not, let's go ahead and move down to uh, item number eight. This is the uh, MOU at the City of Watertown for pictometry data. Since you're up here, Shawna, you want to go ahead and brief us on that?
Um, we do six-year contracts with pictometry, which is now called Eagleview. Um, and our last six years, we actually had paid for six-inch imagery and received one-inch imagery. Um, this time they had bid us out at three-inch imagery, which is going to cost us the county approximately forty-five thousand, three thirty-five a year. Um, and then they sent a new contract last week and they basically stated it's easier to fly everything at one inch. So they are going to give us the one-inch imagery again for the three-inch imagery price. But the price is going up uh, like nine, eight to nine thousand from what it was the last six-year contract.
But that's the number forty-five, three forty-five.
Yes, that would be the county's portion.
That is what you budgeted for this?
Um, that is in my budget for next year.
For next?
Yep. So this will be for next year's payments. And basically with our Eagleview contract, the City of Watertown um, signs all the contracts, we make payments to them, and then First District is the one that actually receives all the pictures and puts all the pictures and does all of the the updating for our stuff and their stuff. So.
I'll make a motion to.
Motion to approve by Gable. Do I have a second by McElhaney? Any further discussion?
So and that.
In.
Well, that that you said that forty-five, thirty-three. I mean, forty-five, forty-five thousand and some.
Three thirty-five, thirty-four.
That will stay constant for the six.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is for forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. You have a uh, any further discussion on that motion? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We'll get that signed.
Okay.
You let us know when they're going to do that so we can get out there with our signs.
Um, they they put us on the schedule. They don't actually tell us what day, but you can tell when you see a plane that just keeps flying.
Are you going to be laying on your roof?
Keeps going over.
Me on the roof, but I was outside.
Tyler's going to be laying on the roof of his house.
We have seen.
Have you ever seen that in Google, Google Maps when the vehicle drive out? There's always some kids out there.
It's signs. Thank you, Shawna. All right, let's move on to the Highway Department. And uh, Mr. Randy Falvey.
Morning, all.
Pretending. Good morning, Randy.
Morning. Good morning.
What's new at the highway shop?
Well, keeping up with Mother Nature has been one of our biggest concerns lately. Doing our best to stay ahead of the rain. We did have several areas that washed over, but didn't cause any major damage. So we just put down a little gravel in a couple of areas. Um, did repair a little bit of culvert damage, which was just a little bit of scouring around the edges of the culverts and whatnot. Uh, we did have some tree damage with one of the storms, so we did a little bit of cleanup there. And we did end up having to close down Sukona for twice overnight. It's usually about twenty-four hours to the minute after the storm comes, then it starts to wash over the road. And then another twenty-four hours, the road being closed down. So. But we do get a lot of phone calls about when that's going to get opened up. And a lot of people have a concern because it's quite a ways to get around that. But it is a two hundred and thirty-two dollar fine if people do go around those barricades and they don't realize that. So at one point we did have, end up actually having to put up extra barricades to stop them from going through the ditches to get around the culverts. Um, we did also. I'm sorry.
I would just say those are very wet dishes.
Yes, they're taking a.
You gotta get.
Yeah.
Uh, we did lay down some riprap in a couple of areas, especially along county roads nineteen and six. Um, just because the water was getting so high, we wanted to uh, prevent any further erosion and whatnot. And then we did some shouldering also to uh, improve the drivability of the roads. Uh, we're getting close to finishing up chip ceiling. We should be done hopefully today with our last portion. We were waiting on doing a patch on one of the areas. Um, July seventeenth, uh, I had a meeting with the S D O T and Banner, our bridge engineer, going over a couple of our bridges. Uh, trying to get future funding for the big program. So this is just basically some pre-information as far as the type, size, and locations of these um, projects. Twenty-ninth, I went and had a meeting with uh, the city's street superintendent, Rob Bannan, and Justin Peterson, the city engineer, as far as discussing preliminary designs for a memorandum of understanding as far as our joint streets around the city and whatnot, just so we have a formal idea of who's responsible for what portions and where our start and end stops are. Uh, we're still continuing our training with the time clock system and working with a few of our individuals as far as test subjects and getting all the bugs worked out on our end. And lastly, I did attend a superintendent certification course last week in Pure and came back with some useful information and some good contacts.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Not? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Let's move on to Facility Manager, Steve. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi.
Well, we'll start out with the egg building. Um, the south parking lot has been, our crack ceiling has been completed with chip ceiling is scheduled for the first half of September. Um, floor epoxy is scheduled for classrooms B and C for the week of September eighth through the twelfth. So by that time, we can be able to have that floor completed and in good shape. Um, government building, camera upgrade has begun this this week with completion by the end of the week. Park. Um, as of Sunday evening, there had been one thousand four hundred and ninety-two reservations with one thousand two hundred and seventy-six online and two hundred and sixteen offline with a revenue so far of one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty cents. And then right now I am looking at both removing and treating some ash trees in the park in the next few years. Um, we have estimated probably close to two hundred and fifty to three hundred trees of ash trees out at the park. So it's it's going to be a big project and so we had out there. So um, I'm going to be selective on certain ash trees to save and take out others and so we had um, that are not in good shape and so. Um, right now I'm looking at wanting to turn around and have at least one ash tree per between each site. So there's some shade because there is probably two to three between each site currently right now. So I want to keep a few and sacrifice some of the others. Um, in the weed department, sprand for the fall will begin after Labor Day. Um, I've had a few complaints this year for Canadian thistle. With a lot wetter condition, it has been very difficult to control um, them before they go to seed, especially if they're clipping and mowing with it very wet. It's it's been a tough one. Um, probably my most ones that I've actually had contact with is actually in in the city limit area. So. Um, the South Dakota Weed Weed Commission meeting and tour will be held in Mitchell area in the middle of September. Um, going down to West Nile. All right, I'm going to give you some stats that last week that the South Dakota Department of Health had sent. Um, as of August thirteenth, there have been twenty-two human cases in South Dakota. Majority of these cases are actually in the northeast and eastern part of the state where we've actually probably had a higher amount of precipitation. Um, there had been um, two deaths so far in the state of last week. And then four human vector vec or vector mech blood donors are basically done, donors and so we had that have been so. Um, our traps have been very high this summer in with Q X Tarcelis, which is the West Nile carrying one. Um, in most of all the county, in county um, communities. Um, I know that Watertown, we get a, I get a weekly deal from Watertown and it's been extremely high of of this species every night on the average, some going to two to three hundred average per night. And usually the set off trigger to to fog is ten per night. So it's very high percentage. Um, and then mosquito conference is set for April in April on September twenty-third in Aberdeen.
Mosquito Conference.
Yeah.
Better send out an email to them and make sure that they all go to Aberdeen.
Yeah. I mean, this is put on by um, the South Dakota Department of Health. So on this.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
That has what I have for report.
Wild conference there.
Uh, well, not really.
All right, uh, should move down to item number nine, Steve, and this is the discussion, possible action to approve quotes to replace carpet in the treasurer's office.
Right. This is an item that I've actually been budgeting for the last three years and with our projects, other projects, it's kind of more or less pushed it off and now finally having some room in the budget this year. Um, I got a couple quotes um, from floors and more, floors and more estimated, or their their quote was six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Dwayne's floor covering was five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Um, my recommendation would be is to go with uh, Dwayne's floor covering.
So moved by Gable, second by Johnson. Any discussion? What's the uh, turnaround time on that or?
That's one thing that we'll have to get. I got to get along, get with uh, Carol and and Dwayne's floor covering. We had kind of a little bit preliminary, did some discussion because there's a lot of things to move and and not to interfere with uh, with uh, business hours. So this project might have to try to be scheduled on like a holiday weekend or something like that. So.
Okay.
That'd be have to be further discussed. So. Yep.
Right. Sounds good. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Let's move on to item number ten. This is action to authorize the chair to sign a partnership agreement for marketing campaign for the Cosup Grant.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Angie Colignan with Community Services here for Sarah. Uh, I am here um, requesting a motion for the chairman to sign a contract with Production Monkeys. They are the marketing firm that was chosen to carry out our um, awareness campaign regarding um, substance use disorder, just decreasing stigma and raising awareness to the community. Uh, the money is a hundred percent paid by the grant, so it's no actual cost to the county.
Oh, that's a good. By Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion?
What's the cost?
Um, is sixty
Sixty.
Thousand a year.
And that's all funded by the grant.
Yes, it's a hundred percent grant funded.
Any more questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eleven is action to authorize the auditor to sign on to a settlement for a new national opioid settlement.
Correct. So there is a new settlement um, outside of the ones that we have already approved back in twenty twenty-one. So I just need your authorization for me to sign on to it for us to become.
We'll approve.
McElhaney moves, second by Schwer. No? Gable? Okay, sorry about that. Any further discussion? All in.
I don't know that, but I can tell you what we have right now, if you're curious. I just received, I've been receiving a few payments of late. I received one in June. I've received a couple this this past week. So the amount we have in that account right now is seventy-nine thousand, nine eighty-one. Thirteen.
And so this new, is this this totally separate settlement?
Yeah.
Does it go, but it goes into the same account?
Yes. Yes, same account, but it's a new settlement. So.
And what are those funds used for?
Well, that is a good, there's.
Why it can reduce.
Yes, it's more on on um, prevention of opioid, I believe. And yep, so um, I do have, you know, I've I've kept it or whatever. I've given it to Lee a few times. The things that are allowed, it is fairly specific. So we have some things in our community that you could could um.
Working with the sheriff's office on.
Yeah, or some, maybe some of the nonprofits as well that.
Drug court, HSA, you have quite a few places here. So, yeah.
All right. Uh, do we vote?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve is action uh, to approve claims for payment.
So I have them separated out again. Um, our jail one, we'll do the regular one first. We can have that laying there. Uh, SDN Communications, Thompson Router, uh, or some Visa, Public Opinion, and then Lewis and Clark Behavioral. And that amount is three thousand, three forty-seven, fifty-eight.
Both approve.
Second. March by Johnson. Now we have a second by Schwer. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
And then our jail bill claims that came in, we had two for Architect Inc. that came to six hundred thirty thousand, three ninety-four, seventy-four. And then Tegra, um, their monthly for this month now is twenty thousand, eight thirty-three, sixty. Total amount is six fifty-one to twenty-eight, thirty-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action to approve automatic budget supplements.
I do have one. Um, and this is to put back into the community service budget. It's for the ERA two funds in the amount of seventy thousand, nine nineteen, twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable.
And this is um, revenue that that we have received for the ERA two from the federal, and then um, we just need to put it back into their budget. They paid for individuals' rent. Now we need to supplement their budget.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to number fourteen, action to approve personnel changes.
No personnel. We have a couple of travel.
Number fifteen is action to approve travel requests.
Yep. We have an extension staff to set up for eight booths, and then we can test staff to go to a meeting.
Both approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public notices, a possible quorum of commissioners could be in attendance at, and as I mentioned before, on the agenda, the groundbreaking was held yesterday.
I left it on just so that it was on the door and just out in the public one more time. So, yeah.
Yeah. We'll get to that here in just a minute. Anything, Commissioners? Nope. Okay. Moving on to old business, number seventeen. Thank for old business. Old business. Number nine eighteen is new business. Anything for new business? Number nineteen, open, public comments. Don't have any public comments? Don't have any public comments? No? Commissioner comments?
Mr. Jay.
Commissioner Gable.
Just, just to follow up on yesterday's groundbreaking, I just wanted to thank everybody again. Um, I did forget to mention two previous C C J A C members, Greg Andrews and Larry Waston. And I so appreciate their help and um, also I want to thank my fellow commissioners, um, and the sheriff plus previous, the previous sheriff Toby Wishard, because um, it's kind of interesting that through, let's say, three of you guys have sitting here were, when you first, when you did the jail the first time. I mean, it was, it's it's kind of hard to, this is things that we don't do every, you know, like maybe every hundred, every, every hundred years, every fifty years, you go something big like this. And so you, you guys, so there's Brenda, Byron, and Tyler, and then there was Elmer and my predecessor George, hello, we're on the commission at the time when they brought it, brought it up and put on ballot twenty-fourteen, so that's before I was a commissioner, and um, so getting that conversation going, so appreciate that, and everybody on the table here. As well as uh, uh, the previous sheriff Toby Wishard got, got that conversation going, and it was a tough conversation to have, so appreciate everybody's help on that.
Okay. It's a good turnout yesterday.
It was.
And the weather did cooperate, which was good. It's hot, sticky, but it was good. All right. Uh, any more comments, Commissioners? Nothing?
I was just trying to think, Tyler and Brenda, when did we first start discussing a new jail? Well, that, you and I came on the first, same time. That was the first year that we came aboard, twenty-eleven, right?
I did find some pieces of paper when I was doing, a long time ago, when I, there was actually, once in a while, you'd have somebody have a meeting like in, I want to say like two thousand seven or two thousand nine. And then they said, yeah, we're doing a new jail, and then, but then you guys were the ones that kind of picked up the ball and finally started, you know, breathing it out.
Those of you that weren't around, we traveled from all of the little communities around here and put on a dog and pony show, and, you know, we didn't get anything thrown at us, but some people were tempted to, I know. And they were kind of tense, a few of those meetings were, uh, because we got right out uh, in the public, right down to earth with these people and on their own, on their own turf, and as you know, there's a uh, strength in numbers and and they had the local community there to express their opinion, and they expressed them very loudly.
Well, we're excited to finally get to the point where we broke ground yesterday on that project and leave, as far as I know, we're still on track for a mid-twenty twenty-seven opening of the new jail, is that right?
It's going to be about two years.
Yeah, yeah, so, good, so. Again, thank you to all of the folks that were involved in making that become a reality, including the constituents who voted to to pass the the bill, so, all right. Anything? Do we need to go into executive session for anything? No need for executive session?
Well, adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.